Is that better?
Yep, mostly.
I switched my phone on hotspot, so we'll see if that helps.
Good evening. I would like to call to order tonight's meeting of the ISD 191 Burnsville, Eagan Savage School Board. The date is April 23rd, 2020, and the time is 6:30. I'd like to start by welcoming those who are joining us at a distance. Our work continues and we appreciate you joining us. With that, Director Courier, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start tonight by approving the agenda. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
Darcy Schatz?
Hi.
DeeDee Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger?
Hi.
Great, thank you very much. We will start with committee reports. And we'll start with the Policy Review Committee with the Chair of the Policy Committee, Director Chester.
Yes, we don't have anything to report. We did not meet this month, but are scheduled to meet in May.
Great, thank you. Negotiations Committee with Director Schatz.
The Negotiations Committee is currently inactive.
Thank you. And Legislative Committee with Director Hallwigger.
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Student Performance and Achievement Committee of the whole has not met. Are there any other reports stemming from our board assignments or school connections? I think I saw Director Courier. Yep.
Yes, I have two reports. One is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. There was no regular April meeting of the AMSD. However, Scott Kuhnquist, the Executive Director and lobbyist of AMSD, has been sending out weekly updates, which I believe we are all receiving. He did send one out yesterday encouraging AMSD members to contact the E12 House Finance Division Committee members regarding the HF 116 bill. Today, the committee was having a hearing on it. It's a bill addressing a longtime AMSD priority of allowing locally elected school boards to renew an existing operating referendum by a vote of the school board, not taking it back to the community. If you want to read further about AMSD's position on this important topic, it is on their website at wwwamsd.org. I did, as private citizen, write in support of that bill. My other report is on Intermediate District 917. The 917 meetings are also being done remotely. However, they are using join hangouts meet through Google. I'm becoming, albeit silently kicking and screaming, modern in my communication skills and habits. The regular April meeting was held on April 7th. There were the regular good news reports from the decals. That's Dakota County Area Learning Center programs and the special education programs. Other business and reports included human resources changes, teacher and employee of the spring quarter honorees, standard business office reports, policy reviews, approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar, approval of resolution of termination and non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts, and board action on teleconferencing of future board meetings. Then on April 21st this week, the 917 Board held a teleconference work session. Eric Van Brocklin, the Administrator of the Secondaries Program, gave an overview of the planning for the 2020-2021 plans. His programs and locations vary slightly each year. And their enrollments, some years they're up, some years they're down. But Melissa Schaller, the Administrator of the Special Education Programs, gave an insightful overview of the planning for the 2020-2021 school year. Four programs have grown substantially in the past few years. SUN, Students with Unique Needs, the T Program, Therapeutic Education Alternatives, the T E C S E, which is the Therapeutic Education Alternative, Early Childhood Special Education Program, and TESSA, the Transition Education Service Alternative Program. She is working hard to keep positions filled and to offer critical programming for students. She gave an overview of what she plans to do for the 2020-2021 year. The presentations I have referenced here are on the 917 website, which is isd917.k12.m.us. The reason I gave the names of those programs, you hear the letters. And as much as I have worked with those programs or know of those programs, I can never remember the names of those programs. So I apologize for giving all of that information, but I can never remember them. And it's helpful to know what those programs are. I think education uses a lot of acronyms and we don't always explain that for the public. But that was 917's planning. They're planning for the 2021 school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Board members, any other reports? Okay, seeing none. We will move to the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event that a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for a separate discussion. Are there any items that board members would like to separate? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Move.
Abigail, you froze for a minute.
Yep, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, second?
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay, Director Schatz? And Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Darcy Schatz?
Hi.
DeeDee Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger?
Hi.
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
All right, and the motion carries. Thank you. Turning to new business, we will, our one agenda item under new business is to approve dental and health premiums. And I'll turn the speaker over to Stacy Sobin, Executive Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Director Alt, Dr. Battle, board members. Bringing to you tonight a recommendation that we approve our premiums for our medical and our insurance plans beginning July 1st, 2020. As we updated you at a previous workshop, we are recommending that our premiums for our medical insurance go up by 2.5% with our dental rates going up 1%. And our life insurance actually saw a decrease valuing about $20,000 and no changes in our long-term disability. I won't go through all of the numbers on the premiums. That's just for your information. But I am making the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the FY21 premiums and rates for employee benefits.
Thank you, Stacy. I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Moved by Director Chester, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any questions or a discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
DeeDee Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger?
Hi.
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
Darcy Schatz?
Hi.
Thank you, and the motion carries. We had a very short business meeting agenda tonight, so I will declare us adjourned. And we'll just take a moment's break for technical support.
Chair out there ready for us to move forward.
They are, okay. So we have two additional bits of work to do tonight. First, we will move into a workshop where we will receive a presentation from Ellers on open facilities planning for 2020. And then following that, we will adjourn to a board retreat to develop board goals. Just so board members are aware of the flow of the presentation. Since it is a rather lengthy presentation, what we will do is for each unique section within the presentation, please ask your clarifying questions on that particular topic when that section is concluded. And we'll just chunk everything out that way, and then Business Services and Stephanie White.
All right, it looks like Abigail has taken an unfortunate step to the side for a moment. I will just step in. Why don't we go ahead and have Ellers begin? Let's see, let's go back. Was there a preamble to the presentation, Dr. Battle, or should we?
If I may.
Yes, Vice Chair Miller and Directors. So tonight, we continue our conversation with open facilities usage in this workshop venue. And we have presenting Executive Director Lisa Ryder and Director White along with staff from Ellers who will make the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So I I just want to make some introductions of the individuals before we get started and to indicate that I will bring up the presentation. While Stephanie and our other speakers, Stephanie White and from Ellers, we have Stacy Kilving and Jason Arnshold speaking tonight as part of the presentation as well. So I, at this point in time, will mute and pull up the presentation for you all to see on the shared screen.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Battle. I'm here to begin our presentation tonight in the Open Facilities Usage Workshop. Lisa, next slide. There we go, thank you. Our agenda tonight is to review the purpose and the guiding change document that we've presented to you in the past as we have progressed down this project. The recommendations that we have at this time, we'll listen to Ellers' presentation and then come back and try and present a summary that will lead into a discussion at the end. The purpose is to maximize the use of our open facilities. That we have decided to close three buildings and we have some other buildings as well that we'll be discussing tonight. The buildings are MW Savage Elementary, Sioux Trail Elementary, Metcalf Middle School. And we'll also be discussing Diamond Head Education Center, River Ridge Education Building, and then the Cedar School. As we continue to go down this path, we continue to meet new community partners. And some of the opportunities in our wonderful community continue to develop. And during this time of of distance learning, our community partners have become even more important. And so those, that will be an additional conversation as we go through. We want to make sure that we're leveraging our resources, becoming as efficient and effective as possible. As a district, we're committed to students, their learning, and offering the best possible learning environments and opportunity. We want to continue to engage our community, have an open and transparent communication decision-making process, be cost-effective, of course, in the use of our facilities, and avoid the creation of inequities and racially and socio-economic identifiable schools. This is our perfect. This is our guiding change document that helps us to illustrate the process that we have gone through. And because we have spent time on this, just want to summarize by saying we're looking to be fiscally responsible. We're looking to enhance our programming in what we're having right now. We're looking to provide flexibility for the district. And then we're looking to continue those community partners and listen to what their needs are and ideas as we move forward. This is the slide that talks about our Burnsville Alternative High School. It currently resides in the Cedar School. And we did an extensive brainstorming around the possibilities of where it is that they would land. At the top of the slide, you'll see just a brief summary of what the needs are of our Burnsville Alternative High School, BaaS. And then the different locations that were considered, the retrofitting that potentially could need to happen, the implications of it, and then some recommendations. And we've been able to narrow that down a little bit more since the last time we spoke with you through conversation, collaboration, just some good thorough looking into in terms of the data and needs of those students in that program. And we'll talk more thoroughly about it there, but you can see on the slide that through our investigation, MW Savage has become one of our top contenders as well as the first floor of Metcalf Middle School. Again, this is our slide that illustrates the the investigation we've done around our BAST program. This is our special education program that serves our transition students from age 18 to 21. It currently resides in the River Ridge Business Building. Serves around 40 students. And so again, we thoroughly looked at the potential, the obvious potential sites that we could consider at that time, and we've been able to narrow that down as well. Considering, again, back to those four main areas that we talked about from our guiding change document. And being able to enhance the programming is one of the things that I think can really stand out in this. And you'll hear more about that in the Ellers' presentation as well as becoming more fiscally responsible. And so the Diamond Head Education Center has landed as one of our higher recommendations and MW Savage as potentially a second good choice for us. Our community partners, again, continue to develop. Obviously, the impact of the pandemic and COVID and responding to our situation has impacted those conversations. And some of those conversations just haven't happened because we're talking about other things. The YMCA, for instance, has been a great partner for us in terms of childcare and food service and continues to be an important partner and will continue to have conversations with them about the needs of our community as we go through the next few months and the next year. Community education is always, you know, can't help but take the opportunity to say what a great job they're doing in helping us with childcare right now. And they continue to be such good, strong community partners for us or connectors to our community. We have connections with our feeder cities, Burnsville, Eagan, and Savage. Head Start has been a great partner to us and I'm excited about some potentials there. And then other indicates that we want to make sure that our community knows as well as you that just the door is open. Our community partners are so important to us. We have lots of good opportunities moving forward. And we're excited about some of the potential that's happening. One of the solid steps that has taken place is Intermediate District 917 approaching us to say that they are interested in leasing the second half of Cedar School beginning in the fall of 2021. And they, just as a reminder, currently lease one half of our building and are interested in leasing the other half or taking over the entire building. They will be bringing it forward July of 2020 to work with their member districts on the next steps and nailing down those specifics. So based on those little facts and others is going to give us a lot more detail here, we're able to make some conclusions. Leasing that Cedar School seems like a really good recommendation moving forward. As a result, we would need to find another location for BaaS. And we've talked about the options there in our, right now, is our top two choices of MW Savage or MW Savage and Metcalf. And then once the decision is made about Diamond Head as a board, then we'll be able to talk a little bit more about what is going to happen with Metcalf, Sioux Trail, and MW Savage, and the relocation of BAST. But really still seeing, and that was consistent from our last presentation, but the next pivotal decision for us as a committee is really that decision surrounding Diamond Head. And I believe with that, we can hand it off to our partners at Ellers.
Let me just check in with board members to see if there were any initial questions on this section that Stephanie just presented. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so yes, let's turn it over to Ellers. Thank you, Stephanie.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Directors. This is Stacy Kilving with Ellers and Associates. Also with me tonight is Jason Arnshold, who's going to end the last portion of the presentation. And then we also have Jeff Sealy, who is on our education team, who knows everything about finance for school and facilities. And so we have him here as a resource in case any questions pop up with regards to that. As the chair had stated earlier, it's a long presentation, so we have broken this up into little chunks. I know you've all read it and I'm sure you've got lots of questions. So I'll let you know each place you're going to pause and then we can take any questions that you have to get those out of the way. But let it be known, there's always plenty of time for questions at the end if you think of something. And if there's something that's urgent or just doesn't really make sense as I'm going through it, you can go ahead and I will be okay if you want to interrupt the presentation for that. So with that, Lisa, can you go to the next slide? So this is just the overview. We're just talking about the deck preliminarily. We're going to talk about your outstanding debt and operational costs. Talk about all of our inputs that we took into consideration for the analysis that we have. Talk about the list of options that we've reviewed and considerations that went into those options. The findings and financial summary, and that's just going to be a brief overview because we're really going to end with that. And that's going to be the document that is one of your decision points that you have. I know we did send out a separate PDF that hopefully you guys received that had that summary slide all in one place. So you can look at that and refer to that as you go back to the discussion that we're having with the presentation as well as some additional cost overview that you had some questions on. We're going to overview the options in more detail. We'll give a summary of those considerations, then its direction and consensus, where we want to walk you through a process to see where you think we can find some common ground within some of those recommendations. And then we'll talk about next steps. So next slide, please. So the Diamond Head Education Center, it's not every day that everybody gets to see what it looks like from a floor plan or from an aerial view. So as noted over on the left-hand side, that's the aerial view of the property. And it's all the parking that's noted. So you can see that you have a lot of land that surrounds your existing building and facility. And then as we go into the main two-story building, it's just all the layout of the uses that are there. Let's go to the next slide. When we look at the overall building, it's a total of 140,000 square feet, of which you guys use about 88,000 square feet of that. Okay, so if we look at the bottom of this under the highlighted senior center, there's about 51,000 square feet. That's just storage, mechanical, and common space. So it's not an overly efficient building. As you guys know, it was built for another purpose, another time. And then you've gone into retrofit to make it meet your needs. The one thing that we did highlight is just, you know, typically when we're looking at options or potential for new facilities for you to actually construct, we look at what our funding sources and we look at what our funding sources and mechanism may be to do that. And so we did pull out admin in the senior center, which those are the non-educational type of spaces. So if you were to move forward, we'd have to figure out a way to solve or address those and still try to keep them in a co-location if that's what you desire. Also highlighted on the bottom is you have a total of 583 parking stalls at that site. So a lot of significant parking and we'll talk about that a little bit later how that comes into play. Next slide, please. So we had talked about at our last meeting, just some of the information that you guys wanted to see in overview. So what we have is that all those existing facilities, so it is the deck, it is Metcalf Middle School and River Ridge, which is your old administrative building where the best program is, is that you have existing bonds that are outstanding on those. It's about 16.3 million dollars worth of debt. And on average, it's about a million dollars that you're paying annually in debt service on those. Now this debt goes out for another 16 years. And this is your debt as of 6/30 of 20, last payment is in 2035. So you've got some time left with regards to these. The question was asked is, you know, as you start to, you know, either close facilities or, you know, to put them into limited use, maybe just basically keeping them heated and cooled as you need to do. The question came up was what is your ongoing operational costs and then your ongoing capital costs that you may have for that facility? So below for the deck, the operational costs are approximately 186,000 dollars a year. And that's including things such as your snow plowing, your lawn and maintenance, your water, your gas and utilities that you have. Metcalf Middle School is a little bit more and which is reasonable because it's a larger facility. It's approximately 207,000 dollars a year. And River Ridge is about 31,000 dollars a year. So you're spending about 423,000 dollars a year in operational costs for those facilities. Again, when we go out and look what's going to happen over the 10 next 10 years. So you own buildings and as we all know, as we know as homeowners, buildings age over time. So we have capital improvements that we have to put in over time. So for the deck and for Metcalf, there's approximately 1.5 million dollars that's identified over the next 10 years. With regards to those facilities for things that are needed for replacement or improvement. Staff didn't have anything in for River Ridge because that one is actually in a pretty good shape. One of the considerations was when we look at Metcalf, if you were to go to a limited user, for lack of a better term to, you know, mothball it so to speak, is that those costs would maybe go down by 10 to 20%. Your cost savings really are going to be probably on snow plowing. And it may be a little bit mostly on your water consumption with not as many folks in there that are using the facilities within there. Next slide, please. So sale proceeds. So what we have found is that if the physical building and property is sold, meaning both the building and the land, the sale proceeds, as you know, have to be deposited into the debt service fund to pay all those existing bonds that are outstanding. Now, when it goes into the debt service fund, it doesn't mean it has to go to a specific building's debt. So if you sold River Ridge, whatever proceeds you have there wouldn't be allocated just to River Ridge debt. It could be allocated to any of the debt that you have outstanding. As you know, those bonds are being paid through a tax levy. So that is a reduction or a tax savings that you would have potentially to the taxpayers out there. But if you do receive special legislation, which I know you guys are working to advance, the use of the proceeds could be available for use in the general fund instead of for a tax levy. Now, some of the options that we're looking at is that you have some nice parcels of property that you have some extra land potentially that you could put into, put to work for you in a better way. So if you were to sell an outlot or any of your excess land, those sale proceeds could be deposited into the general fund. We looked at the initial bond issues that you had for these three facilities to make sure that those dollars weren't used to either acquire that land or make improvements on those lands, which I think our preliminary review and analysis is that that is not true. So with that, I am going to pause here to see if you have any questions just on the overall debt, the annual capital costs and use of any proceeds.
Board members, any questions? Just raise your hand if you do. Okay, I am not seeing any questions. Stacy, I did have one on this last slide on the sale proceeds. Beyond applying the proceeds of any sale to debt or to the general funds. Am I correct in assuming that we could also take those proceeds and as a board decide to commit them for some other use such as construction adding, creating an addition on another school for future use?
Chair Director, that is my understanding. I don't know if Jeff Sealy from our education team has any other opinion or thought on that, but that was my understanding as well.
So if I understood your question, you were asking if you could use the sale proceeds to apply towards building addition?
To commit, commit the, say, we we had a sum total of 5 million dollars from land sale. As a board, we we have the option of taking action to commit that money. In other examples, and I'm wondering if in this example, we could, we could do so as well, commit that money specifically, set it aside for use in construction.
If if it is not the building, it is the land, the outlot or excess land, then yes, you can use it for capital.
If we wanted to do that, would a legislative exception allow us to do that regardless?
Legislative exception would allow you to take the it's from the sale of the buildings and apply them to the general fund. Of course, the general fund can be spent on capital or building projects. So yes.
So you're saying in terms of not spending them immediately, but setting them aside and committing them, a legislative exception would allow us to do that?
Yes, you would be able to set them aside and carry them in your fund balance and use them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that. So would we need a legis, a special legislative legislation if 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 we only sold or the excess land or outlot?
Chair, Chair Director and Jeff, I can take a stab at this. You wouldn't because that is not from bond proceeds was used for that. So you're able to put that in the general fund and you'd have those same restrictions without any legislative change.
So it's really only the sale of the building where it comes into play?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, Lisa, if we can go to the next slide. So when we look at any potential for any of your properties, one of the things that comes in is local jurisdictions control that they have over the land. So when we looked at the deck property, it is currently zoned mixed use, which means you could have apartments, retail office and hotels and restaurants, all those types of uses. Basically, it's, you know, trying to help you maximize that land. And the city really went through that as part of the 2040 comprehensive plan. I think in working in discussions with you guys as well as part of their vision, what they'd like to see, if in fact you were ever to vacate that facility. Apartment developments under current zoning is only 60 units to an acre. So any change to that, and that's part of our basis for our inputs is that that's right now what you could do without any change in zoning or through what's called a plan unit development. So that's what we used in our analysis. Any partial sale that we're going to be talking about of the deck property. So this is any of your outlot or extra land that we view that you may have. We assume that you're going to be able to meet your parking needs for your facility if in fact you do that. So currently, as we showed you before, there's approximately 583 stalls that you have. You only need 250 to 300 stalls and it's a matter of at varying points throughout the day in which you need those stalls. One of the great things is that you are directly across the street from a publicly owned ramp by the city, which they built for public use and any overflow parking. And at any given time to the day, they have about 100 plus stalls in that ramp that's available. So if in fact you were to look to sell some of your parking areas for development. And if you weren't able to meet all of your parking requirements on site, you could look to potentially meet that with the offsite parking with the ramp. Now, when we go to Metcalf, which is located in the city of Eagan, that is zoned quasi-public. So what that means is basically for your school use that you have. If in fact you wanted to sell that facility or any of the land that's currently located there, it would require both a zoning and comprehensive plan change for the new uses. Now that process can take anywhere from three to six months. It all depends on what the planned zoning change is for the underlying comprehensive plan. It all depends on if an environmental assessment is required. Again, it gets to the end uses that are there. And then you just go into the standard public process of going through the council approvals and working with them to figure out what in fact they would like to see on that site as well. If in fact, you know, when I talked with the the city, yes, they could see that a mix, if you were to sell the whole entire site, that yes, it could be a mixed use development that you could have. Single-family residential, some apartments, any office retailer hotel could go on there. What they really look at for the existing neighborhood to the south that we'll talk a little bit later, they really see that there's probably a strong need or a strong presence for more additional single-family or townhome development. Next slide, please. So when we look for sale proceeds for your facilities, when we look at the deck, we put in our estimates sale proceeds of 5.358 million. And that's really what the existing debt is for the site and the facility that you have. And we think at a minimum, that's really where you should be targeting and hopeful that you can bring in. When talking to the development community and talking with brokers and looking at land sale comps throughout the area, the range is likely four to a million to that 5.38 million, which is approximately eight to 11 bucks a square foot. And again, that's comparable to what we're seeing for other sales within and around the city of Burnsville. If you're going to sell a portion of the property, a two-acre outlot, that becomes a simple mathematic equation for us. What we see in the market typically is that on average developers are paying about 10,000 dollars a unit for apartments. So if we take that 10,000 dollars times what we could get on there at 60 units, 120 units an acre, it's 1.2 million dollars. Now, when we looked at all the recent land sales and comps in the city, the land sales have ranged between 4,000 dollars a unit to 15,000 dollars a unit. So that 10,000 is falling within that average range. And typically, what we're even finding on some of these developments is that they are going forward to the local jurisdiction to ask for assistance, either in the form of tax increment financing or tax baitment assistance to help these projects actually work and move forward. All of our assumptions for if you're to sell a portion of the deck or if you sell the whole deck is that Burnsville will assist you with redevelopment if their demolition grant program. They have dollars set aside. So your cost to demolish that building could be covered by that grant, which helps you maximize your purchase price. Just in generalities, how it typically works is if someone's going to come and buy your property and say you're going to sell the entire deck for redevelopment. What they're going to do is they're going to come in and they're going to look at it and they're going to do any analysis for any environmental concerns or considerations. And they're going to take demo into consideration and they're going to net that out of the price that they're going to offer to you. So the great thing with the city of Burnsville having their demolition grant program, that's not probably going to be a net cost to you that you'll be able to maximize any sale proceeds that you have. Now, when we look at River Ridge, we put in just an average of a million dollars. So the range is likely about 823,000 to 1.1 million. And it all depends on the type of end user. It's going to be at the lower range if it's going to be an investor that buys it to lease it out to one or more tenants. And it's going to be at the higher end if it's going to be build a suit or an owner occupant for that facility. Those proceeds don't account for broker fees, which are typically five to seven percent. And so we use 6% in our analysis. Now, what we would recommend for River Ridge is that it would make sense that you would probably retain a broker to help you if you chose to sell that facility. That's what they do and their fee for services, what they do is they market that property for you. They handle the showings, et cetera, for you. Now, when we look at Metcalf sale proceeds, we looked at two options for that. What we know and understand from junior high schools is that you typically need 25 to 35 acres for a junior high. That's the standing ratios that we have. So what we'd look at is since Metcalf is currently 35 acres, if we went to your minimum size, that would allow us to sell 10 acres. When we look at that, the sale proceeds for that 10 acres is approximately 1 million dollars. And then for all 35 acres, it's about 2.65 million dollars. Now you say, why is that so much less, especially if you sell all 35 acres when we think we can get a lot more for the deck? Well, the reality is, is that our assumptions for right now and based upon discussions with the city is that it really assumes that that development is going to be a single-family homes and townhomes. So you're going to have a lower density development than you would see up at the deck. Again, when we get into the pictures and look at it, you'll see that you're mostly abutting a residential neighborhood. Anytime we go and what we see for communities that are undertaking redevelopment adjacent to residential neighborhoods, especially when they have a lovely view of an open, vast, green fields, they can tend to be a little bit controversial. So we were conservative in saying at this point in time, we think a lower density residential housing is kind of your no-brainer. Doesn't mean that at the end of the day, if you so choose to pursue actually selling Metcalf, that you wouldn't really put it out there for a higher and better use of a mixed use and then allow a developer to take that process through to argue and to work through the city process to see that happening. So we just took it on a conservative level and we can talk about that more when we get into that. One of the things is we don't account for a demolition grant in here. So if in fact you were to sell all 35 acres and the demolition was required to the building, we would have to net that out likely of any sale proceeds unless a developer was able to receive grant funds from some other entity. Next slide, please. Next, the best program would be relocated. We just assumed approximately 6,000 square feet. I think if you look at where they were before, they were at about 4,000 square feet. And in their new facility, it's almost 12,000 square feet. So we just picked a 6,000 number in between. So it's really going to depend on where you move them, if you choose to move them at the end of the day and what square footage you're going to put them in. We put in 50 bucks a square foot and retrofit costs, so about 300,000 dollars. Your retrofit costs could be anywhere from, I would say, probably 30 bucks a square foot, a little bit past 50 bucks a square foot. So we went on the higher end just to give you a little bit more margin of error when you look at that. And then if we look at construction for our new deck, so that's one of the things that we looked at, we used 300 bucks a square foot all in. And that's typically what we find as a good, solid number for any new, what we consider you, even though you're an educational facility, you really are an office-type user. So with that, I will pause here, Chair, if there's any questions of the board members.
Board members, any questions? I am not seeing any. All right, no questions.
Right, next slide. So the options that we considered, it shows seven, it's really nine at the end of the day because we have a couple A's in there. And I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about options six and seven. So if we can go to the next slide. So option six was really saying, what if we move the deck operations to Metcalf and you were to lease the deck building to others? All the feedback that we got from developers and brokers was solidly the same. It indicates that your property would be difficult to lease up with new tenants. You know, they said, if you want to lease it to a charter school, great, you could do that every day of the week. But we know that's not one of your options that you are looking at. So it's difficult to find folks in the office use that would go in there. The facility, it's a B-minus office space and the potential rent range is probably eight to 10 bucks on a triple net basis for that facility. Now typically, new tenants that are coming in, they're expecting landlords to pay for improvements. So those tenant improvements between 50 and 70 bucks a square foot. Even if you're able to find a tenant that didn't want much in improvements, you're still probably in that 25 to 40 bucks a square foot for those improvements. In addition, owners have to budget five to six bucks a square foot annually for additional tenant improvements that may be needed and a buck fifty a square foot annually for broker fees, just to keep that property released. So at the end of the day, it shows you that you have a mismatch of your financials. So if you have to invest more than eight to 10 dollars a square foot in that facility to get tenants in that can only pay eight to 10 bucks a square foot, you're in a losing, you're a break-even proposition. To the extent you have to invest more, you're in a losing proposition. So we didn't really view that that was probably the best use for that facility. If in fact you wanted to keep the deck there or looked at other options. Next slide. Other options discussed was retaining the deck property under a land lease and moved to Metcalf. So that would mean that you would keep the property, you would demo the building. And then you allow other users to come in and build on that property and you would lease the land to them. So likely the highest and best use for the site is predominantly apartments because that garners you a higher price. And land leases are not as common in Minnesota for these types of uses. Lenders don't always look favorably on them because they like to have the end uses actually on the land, believe. A commercial property land lease works in limited situations and not very common to a variety of factors such as credit and other issues. A commercial property land lease works in limited situations and not very common to a variety of factors such as credit and other issues. So really, the developer and broker feedback we got, it indicates that that's a difficult scenario to implement, if at all, and is unlikely. So you could spend a lot of time pursuing that, but probably to no avail. Next slide, please. So the considerations, this is what we look at as we go through the options and really what's before you. There's both policy and financial considerations for you. Under policy, it's location. When we really talk about the deck. What we've heard loud and clear is that it's a great central location for the users that come to that facility. But it's also a great central location to have all your programs under one roof, and that's why you moved them all there in the first place. It's use of existing facilities and more importantly, it's using existing facilities that you paid for improvements and upgrades to. And you still have outstanding debt with regards to it. It's about disruption. So any option you're looking at, are you disrupting services to the extent that it doesn't make sense to move them to a certain place? Or are they going to be out of commission for a certain period of time if in fact you have to come up with a brand new solution for them? And that's also looking at the future needs of the district, you know, where are you going with enrollment? What are the needs of the district overall for programming, et cetera? When we look at financial, it's about sale proceeds. How can we maximize dollars for you that you can put to work in the way that you want to put them to work? It's looking at any new costs you'd have to undertake within the options and maybe that's from moving to retrofit to new facilities. It's looking at a general fund deficit reduction. As we know, you have an annual operating deficit of approximately one point two million. And it's looking at opportunities to say, hey, how can we bring that down for our our school district? And then the other one is a tax levy impact, and that is to all the taxpayers in your district. What happens to them under any of these options that you are reviewing? And really, at the end of the day, it's it's not an easy decision, you know, and it really depends on what you as a board really want to accomplish for that area. Let's go to the next slide. So technically, as we talked about, there's nine options to choose from. There's four that are less feasible. And the bottom two that are Xed out and red, six and seven are the two that we talked about that really the feedback we got is it's just not worth you pursuing at this point in time. Because it may not garner what you would want at the end of the day. Option four that we'll talk about in more detail is to sell the deck for redevelopment. Sell River Ridge and construct a new ninety thousand square foot facility on site. Well, that would be awesome, right? It'd be great. And the reason why we use ninety thousand square feet is that that's about the size that you're in today. Well, wouldn't it be great if you could have a new facility that really meets the needs of all those educational programs that you have. On site there in a more efficient way for the district. Option five A, which is stay in place at the deck, retrofit best, sell River Ridge and sell Metcalf for redevelopment. Well, that may not be feasible because you may want to hang on to Metcalf. For whatever reason, if it's to transfer other programs there, if you think you have future needs, if enrollment may increase or what have you. Next slide, please. These are some of the, you know, none of these are real aha moments that come out of this as we go through and look at all the options is that. One, it is more cost effective to use your existing assets. It just is because it doesn't cost you anything to construct a new one, doesn't cost you to move to any extent that you don't have to. Sale proceeds won't solve any long-term budgetary challenges for the district. That's just a reality because when you look at what you get, it's a short-term fix for a longer term issue that you have going on. Potential loss of assets that the district has invested in, but you still have to pay for. So that's what you have to reconcile with yourself as well. And the deck is ready for redevelopment if you choose to sell all or a portion. But Metcalf is going to take a little time to prepare for a partial or full sale. So like we talked about, if in fact you're going to make a decision, you know, in six months that that's what you want to do or a year. You're still going to have planning of three to six months to get through a process to get you even zone so that you can get that ready for redevelopment. So with that, I will pause here, Chair, if there's any questions.
Board members, questions or?
You said you're going to talk more about this option four shortly, right?
Correct.
Because I have thoughts, but I'll save them. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. That's.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. So this is the financial summary. You have an expanded one that was provided to you as a separate PDF. And we'll go into more detail, but again, what we tried to do is put everything in one place because there's a lot of stuff going on with this. To say, what are you getting for sale proceeds? Do you have any new costs? What's your outstanding debt? And what do you get for net proceeds with and without that? And what's your impact to your general fund versus your debt service fund? And what we added into the one that was handed out to you or in the separate PDF is where we added just the net impact to your debt service fund. And a net impact to your general fund, so you could see those implications. So we'll go to the next slide. As we go through these. You'll see the same thing. We'll have a photo of the what we're talking about. We will talk about what the financial implications are and then we'll go into the pros and cons. So I know you guys have all read this. I'll probably just talk through the first pros and cons to list those. After that, I'm just going to talk about the highlighted ones just to save time because I know you, more important is about a discussion with all these options. So as we look at option one, it is stay in place at the deck, which is status quo. Next slide. And really, there's no impact, right? Because it's business as usual for you. So as we go to the pros and cons slide. One, you really get to keep your centralized administration and programming, which is the whole reason why you moved there a few years ago. It's a great location for users. You have no disruptions to your operations and there's no moving cost for the deck. You have no future investment in new space and you retain Metcalf for future use. What are the cons? Well, you don't get any sale proceeds for other uses. You have a facility that really it's not as efficient, may not fully meet the needs of the district, but it's working fine for what you're doing. And then you have no immediate reuse for Metcalf, so you have ongoing operational costs unless you happen to move some programs there. Next slide. Option one A is, well, stay in place, let's retrofit for best to move them to deck and then let's sell River Ridge. And really, why we looked at selling River Ridge is that it's a facility that if in fact we can find space for best. And it makes sense to move them into one of your existing facilities. Well, then let's do it because it's one less asset that you have to maintain over the long time or pay for operational. Plus, it's just all about that co-locating your services or programs together. So as we look at the financial implications with regards to this one. We don't have any sale proceeds. It's that million dollars that we talked about getting for River Ridge. We have broker fees of sixty thousand or that's six percent. The offsetting debt you have is approximately two point eight million dollars. And then we threw in for moving cost to best about a hundred thousand dollars in retrofit is at that fifty bucks a square foot or three hundred. So your net financial impact is approximately two point two million. And if we note those one million dollars in sale proceeds equals probably one year in your debt service fund. Because again, if you recall, your annual debt service is one million for all of the bonds outstanding for all the facilities. Your net financial impact without debt is five hundred and forty thousand. The impact on the debt service fund is nine forty, so that's the million dollars minus the sixty. And the impact on the general fund is a minus four hundred. That would be your moving and retrofit costs. Now, some of the questions, because we didn't give the detail on the moving costs, we were like, why does it cost so much to move? Well, it's, you know, moving costs are really about, you know, do you have to take, you know, you know, walls down? Do you have to, you know, disassemble cubicles and other things, moving equipment and furniture and fixtures? You're just going to have some costs. So it really is kind of a best guess estimate with regards to those and they will change, you know, once we can get some finals. Next slide, please. Really, as we add into the pros on this one, it's the same as one, but really you get proceeds from River Ridge to offset debt. Or if you get special legislation to do something in your general fund. Best is now centralized with other programming and you have savings for operational costs at River Ridge. We'll move on to option two.
So I have a quick question for option one A, going back to the financial breakdown. So the net, so we're actually going to be experiencing technically a loss of two million, right? Because the what is owed on the building is going to be still more than what we would get in a sale.
Chair Director, that is correct. As you look at the debt and everything all in, it's a net minus. But it's a positive on your debt service fund. It's a negative to your your general fund. So option two, I think we moved past one here. Yep, there we go. So this is where we talked about, it's the same as option one A, which is, you know, keep deck in place, sell River Ridge. And move, you know, best to another facility. We said, well, let's look at a couple two acre outlots on that facility site. And so we hate to get people up on arms, which parking lot are we going to, you know, best sell off? And that's something that can be debated in the future, but we just tried to diagram essentially where there was a couple acre lots that would be available for development. And we think likely would be something that developers would like to see. That's probably where they would like to locate due to visibility and other issues. Let's go to the next slide. So if in fact we could sell a portion of your deck, that gives you an additional one point two million dollars in proceeds, along with a million dollars from River Ridge. So your net financial impact now goes down to a million dollars in the loss. That two point two million in that positive, the black of proceeds, that's about two years of debt service payments. Or if you get special legislation, it's available for general fund use. So we will look at the net financial impact without debt. It's about one point seven million to the positive. It's a two point one four oh million impact to the debt service fund and a negative four hundred, again, for those moving and retrofit costs to the general fund. We move to the next slide. Again, you have the sale proceeds from River Ridge, you have additional sale proceeds from the deck. And then we take on the con side that you don't have sale proceeds. Next slide. As we look at option three, which is sell deck, we're just going to move out, let's sell River Ridge. So let's get rid of two of your assets and then move to Metcalf and or to be determined facility, at least for the best. When we look at the impact for this, again, what we said is our goal should be if you truly decide to sell the deck. At a minimum, we need to get what your outstanding debt is and just put you at a zero position and not have a net loss for that. That would be ideal. We bring in the sale proceeds from River Ridge. So at the end of the day, when we bring everything in for that. Your additional costs that you have in this item compared to the other one is now we have to retrofit Metcalf for deck. And that's at one point seven nine five million dollars. So again, at the end of the day, if you get about six point three million in proceeds. Either you have money for six years of debt payments or you have six point three million that you can put to use elsewhere within the district. If in fact you get special legislation. So the net financial impact without debt is three point six million to the positive. Your debt service fund would be about six point three million and the negative impact of the general fund is about two point seven billion dollars. So we look at the pros and cons of this is basically. You do retain Metcalf, but you not need to find a home for the deck in the future if in fact you had. Move the, if you wanted Metcalf for another use. It does maximize your land sale proceeds because you're selling the whole facility. You can potentially pay off the debt for the deck. You can reuse an existing facility in Metcalf, which is great. And it removes those operational costs of decks. So again, you're taking two facilities out of operational costs that you have currently on an annual basis. What we see for cons is now Metcalf is also an aging and requires updates for maximum functionality. The probably the bigger one is your loss of geographical location. And so that was one of the pros that you had, which was you liked having that location because it seemed to work well for your end users. Requires additional out-of-pocket investment for moving and facility retrofit. And then Metcalf is unavailable if enrollment increases in the future or if for whatever reason you you need Metcalf for something else. We'll move on to the next option. Sell the deck for redevelopment, sell River Ridge and construct a new ninety thousand square foot facility on site. Again, here on this one, we highlight a two acre site, just to let you guys know from a basic construction. Forty-five thousand square foot floor plates work great for office. They're efficient to build and they're efficient for a layout. So you would end up with a two-story facility. And the reason why we just chose that portion of the location, again, it could be moved up further. Is that that just seemed to be a great location in that you could actually build a new facility there if you so choose. Without disrupting your existing programming and then they could move into the new facility if you so choose. So let's go to the next slide. So again, we would get the sale proceeds from selling the rest of the deck land and we just assume that you're still going to get the five point three, even though you're going to. Get rid of two or keep two acres for yourself. We didn't know if it was significant enough to really look if we'd have to do a deduct. And really, part of your overarching goals and policies and what we would do in negotiation is we really want to even out that debt of the existing facility. The big one that you have is down below is construction of a new facility. So that's just taking that ninety thousand square feet times three hundred bucks a square foot to get you to a twenty-seven million dollar new facility that you could do. Your ability to do that would be through certificates of participation that you could do for that new facility. But the reality is, is you don't have enough room in your levy to actually fund that large of a facility. Now, it's not to say that if you choose to do this and, you know, want to take on a new impact of a brand new facility and figure that out. I think there's ways we can maybe get creative to figure out if there's some solution. But again, that's only if that's something you truly want to proceed with. And then as we look at the net impact, this is your biggest negative and the reason being is because of that construction of a new facility. So with that, I think one of the commissioners, Mr. Our directors, Mr. Hume had a couple of questions. So if you want to, I'm happy to take those at this time.
Um, yeah, it's more of a comment. I appreciate the thoroughness that we're hearing about all possible options, but. Again, given that we are in the midst of closing three schools. Cutting dozens of teacher positions and having declining enrollment for the last decade and likely to continue for many more years. Or at least a number of more years. I just don't think we even want to. Consider option four at this moment in time. Not to mention what the impact of COVID nineteen is going to be on potentially on the real estate market and the economy and. I will be very much against pursuing option four at this point. So it's more of a comment than a question.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else?
Yes, Gerald, I had a couple of question comments. I also appreciate the thoroughness. I thank you for this is. What we've been definitely looking forward to. I just want to make one observation going back to. So your, your slide. Slide twenty-seven, where we spoke about the option one and the proceeds amount, the net being zero. And Lisa, if you're running this, you don't have to follow me on this because I'm going to jump to another slide, but you just leave that up. I do have a little bit of a tension with this and I brought this up before. It is, I understand you're doing an apples to apples comparison across your your tables and I appreciate that. It is a little. I believe we're leaving a little bit out when we say it's absolutely zero because if in your own slide, much earlier, fourteen, I guess. Where you listed the outstanding debt, annual operational costs and the ten-year SIP capital improvement plan costs. Deck had an annual debt cost of three hundred and thirty-five thousand and an annual operational cost of one hundred and eighty-six thousand. So roughly a half a million dollars in costs that we have by doing nothing. That's, you know, a standing cost in that building and then a SIP of one point five million over ten years. So it's not to say, I do understand, I am again, I get the apples to apples. I just want to be very clear as we're having the conversation with the public that it's not an absolute zero just to stay at that. We do have costs to maintain and keep going. We would be away from those costs in any of these scenarios. I know they weren't rolled into the rest of the tables, so. And I don't expect you to go back and redo them or anything. I just, I just want to be clear about that, that. Even if we were to, you know, lose or receive a half a million or whatever. On the sale of the space, we'd be avoiding a future cost, annual cost roughly of a half a million dollars. Um, the other point I just want to make, you know, this keeps right, I have read through the presentation, so we'll see more of it later. But it's very apparent that. We, none of these options that involve any kind of movement on the property and stuff are financially doable by this district in my perspective. Unless we receive that debt exemption from the state. I mean, that's, it's just not an option. There's nothing here that nets out anything to, to lovely to your point, anything that would be, you know, a positive. We'd be taking a loss on it. So. And again, I know that that you potentially even legally can't just assume that we're going to get that. So you need to include those numbers in your presentation, but I'm saying to the rest of the board. And I don't know what that means, quite frankly, because it's kind of a cart and horse thing. So how we get it, you know, until it's signed, crosses the governor's desk and it's signed by, we're never guaranteed we're getting that exemption. But I don't see a path forward that we're not. I don't see a path forward that we're not, that we can't proceed on any of these options unless we actually get the exemption. Because otherwise, there's no financial situation that I see that's advantageous. So but I didn't mean to get ahead on the presentation, but that's just an overall statement. I think I noticed when I was reading through this. All right.
Um, I, I, going along that, I think the only way that we could get anything that would be a benefit to us without having to go through legislation for any kind of exemption would be to be selling off parcels of current property. So if we sold off a parcel of Metcalf and a parcel of Diamond Head, then we, that would go, we would have access to use that in our general fund right away, or however we saw fit with, with capital improvements or what have you. So that's the only, the only thing that I was thinking that we would have a little more leeway or control over versus having to go through special legislation. I also agree with Scott that I don't think option four, given what we've gone through as a district, is the the wisest solution for us at this time. I would be interested in understanding the, you know, and exploring and discussing later, some of the, the pros and cons of of these other options, you know, of selling River Ridge or you know, selling parcels of Metcalf or whatever. I think one of my other questions in this has nothing necessarily to do with Eller's presentation, but maybe something that I'd like to hear from Stephanie and Lisa is do we, do we as a district foresee needing Metcalf? Are we a two or three middle, middle school district? You know, if, if we have thoughts or plans of, of knowing that there's expansion possibilities at Eagle Ridge for build out. You know, is there really a purpose for the district to hold on to Metcalf or not? You know, I think, I think that's one of the things that would help me understand how to, where I would sit decision wise.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Gerald.
Yes, Dr. Battle.
Clarification, Chair Alton Directors, Stacy, option two. The land sale can go to general fund, correct?
Chair Directors, that is correct.
Thank you. Regarding Director Chester's question, either now, I think Executive Director Stacy Sobin can share his thoughts about what would prompt an additional middle school and then Lisa or Stephanie can talk about Eagle Ridge and the option. But they are considering the state requirement for junior high, high school, middle school, if Eagle Ridge would meet the criteria.
So we'll start with Stacy Sobin.
Well, you're, you're only if Dr. Battle, if I'm following your conversation here, your request, you're, you're potentially just a few hundred students away from needing a middle school capacity in one way or the other. You know, if we, if we turn the corner and start adding about 300 students, your Eagle Ridge and your Niclet are going to be at capacity and you're going to need additional space. So that's either back at Metcalf, that's going to be back at your other buildings where if you add on to them. But in some way, you're, you're the first building that you're going to probably have to bring back online would be a middle school. Because even your eight elementaries could increase easily that 300, 400 students still fit within the eight buildings. But you're going to run out of space once it hits the middle school level.
And Lisa or Stephanie?
So I would just say that at the point in time in which we would be needing to consider what to do, we would want to consider the costs to add over 300 more students, say at Eagle Ridge Middle School would be about 25,500 square feet. And at that $300 per square foot amount, that's 7.65 mil. And so the wondering would be, how would we fund that? And would that be additional debt? And the other side of that coin might be what if you put the same similar dollar amount into Metcalf Middle School, could you actually bring back not just 300 room for 300 students, but rather room for another 1100 with improvements as needed throughout that building? And I don't think it would take as much as it would to build new over at Eagle Ridge. Alternatively, as has been mentioned at one point or another, is the concept of moving the eighth grade to the high school. So it all takes time. If you're adding new, whether it's in addition to a building or something of that nature, you've got a construction period of time along with planning and bidding process. And if you are remodeling, you, you still have similar, just maybe not as lengthy.
Thank you. Stephanie? Anything to add?
Abigail, I just, I would just like to make one quick comment on Stacy. Thank you for the information. But I will point out that you're speaking in 300 positive to where we are right now, while we're trend, been trending a negative for years now. So Lisa, what is it? 150, 200 roughly a year or something in that neighborhood? So we're looking at, in truth, we would have to almost immediately go 500 plus, you know, because you'd have to stop the negative and add the positive that Stacy spoke to on top of that. And we have a growth community to our west, prior life, that growth, both internally and from us, and now is looking at cuts because they aren't growing quite as fast as they anticipated. So I think it's be exceptionally optimistic for us to think that we're going to be in a position to need to adjust buildings in, in, in the immediate future and potentially for quite a while. That's my personal opinion.
I agree, especially when we got, saw the slides when they're looking at the school situation, the school decisions back of the, over the winter. And I think our three smallest grades are the young elementary grades. So by the time they're in middle school, if those trends continue, they're still going to be much smaller even than what we have now. Yeah, we're a number of years away unless something significant changes.
Chair Alt, I guess what I would add is guiding us back to our guiding change document and that idea of providing flexibility and being fiscally responsible, I think are the keys to this situation and making that decision. And supporting that idea of, you know, where we're at right now is obvious that we are a two middle school district. But with that potential to grow, you know, how does the board see that flexibility and being able to respond to that in a very stable way? You know, how can we provide stability?
Thank you, Stephanie. So I will wrap this part of the, the discussion up and we'll move forward to the next, the next portion. I did want to get a couple of comments in on my own. First, I what I keep reminding myself is in all of this, the, the operational costs do have an impact on the general fund. And so even with enrollment, even if enrollment trends in a similar direction, a smaller footprint certainly means that we will have less operating costs and would just see those savings on an annual basis. Number two, I think, I think at the end of the conversation, I, I hear people wanting to talk about, you know, two, two middle school district versus a three middle school district. And, and I think in all of that, that's a great conversation. We need to have it. I also think that depending on the decisions that we make, we might well be building our own district on our own. If, if we are creating opportunity, you know, the, we keep hearing that our neighborhoods are fully built, built out. While we're looking at opportunities right now, whether, whether they're fiscally responsible for us as a district using Diamond Head as, as an example, and I tend to agree with those that have already spoken. Selling off Diamond Head doesn't really appear to be fiscally sound for us, but there certainly are opportunities for us to build additional housing to attract other, other families. And I think that, that's something we should keep in mind and in terms of where we might be headed. But with that, and we're, we're definitely going to have more conversation once we get through the slides. So Stacy, I'll hand it back to you.
I'm sorry, Cheryl. My apologies. I was trying to raise my hand. Do you mind if I ask just a real quick question for clarification? Thank you. And thank you, Cheryl and board members. Stacy, could you bring the slide back to the financial impact on option two? This is just, yeah, relevant, just because I know that the admin team had a number of discussions about this. And I just want to clarify, you've said on a couple of occasions and pointed out that the sale proceeds of land could be used in general fund. So just for, for context of the slide, would it be accurate that the, the impact of debt service fund, the two items in the very bottom of the slide would actually be a range where it could be a net pick, a net impact on debt service from a one point, well, a 1.14 to one or 2.14 and the impact on general fund could be a minus 400,000 to positive 800,000, depending on what the district decided to do with the 1.2 million proceeds from the two acre sale.
That is correct.
Yep. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in those ranges. We're looking at those slides because I think that's also going to be relevant as you are about to preview option five as well.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, let's move on to our last two options. So option five is stay in place at the deck, retrofit for best, sell River Ridge and sell 10 acres of Metcalf. This is a slide that you guys have seen before. So the yellow portion is approximately 10 acres that would be available for sale. The gray line that's running perpendicular, that's the municipal boundary between Eagan and Burnsville. So on the right hand side is Eagan and on the left hand side is Burnsville. As I talked about earlier, when we're looking at opportunities for selling all or a portion of a Metcalf, when you look at that lower portion that you really have available as potential excess land, as you can see, it abuts up to a single family residential neighborhood. And so that's why we put that into our analysis and assumptions. And all the feedback we got from developers is that, yes, it makes most sense for it to be a single family or maybe a medium density town home development. One, because of the existing neighborhood. Two, cues from the city that that's really what they would see likely or allowable there. And third, it really is that whole thing that when you're going into an existing single family neighborhood with a lovely open field adjacent to them, we always run into issues of education and neighborhood meetings of trying to change our uses there. We go to the next slide. And when we look at the impact of this, you know, we had about $2 million in proceeds that we were looking at, which would equate to about two years of debt service payment. Your net impact is with album is negative, but really you have a positive on the debt service fund and then just your general fund is the negative for moving and retrofit. So let's go to option five A. Or sorry, pros and cons. I, I'm not going to go through these in detail because you've seen a lot of those. So and it looks like Brian's raising his hand for.
Yeah, sorry. Just back a slide to, I, I don't see the proceeds from 10 acres of, of land here.
Yep. The sale proceeds from Metcalf is $1 million. It's with the little star asterisk next to it. See sale proceeds Metcalf of $1 million. That was our assumption that for that 10 acres, that would be the sale price.
Okay, sorry.
So let's go to option five A then. So again, that's the same as option five, but let's say you're going to sell all of Metcalf for redevelopment. And again, when we talk about the sale prices, we put it all in as a single family residential development, probably at a lower density. And again, those are cues from the city. But again, if this was something you were serious about and really looking at, we would spend a lot more time with the development community and others to really look at more of a mixed use development would match, which would maximize your sale proceeds a lot more than the numbers that we're going to show. So let's go to the financial impact. We had approximately $2.6 million for the sale of that land. With your million dollars that you had from River Ridge, your net financial impact is still a negative. That's because there is a lot of existing debt for Metcalf of approximately 8.2 million. But again, if in fact you sold the whole thing and you didn't have special legislation, your general fund debt service fund would be in the positive of about 3.6 million. And your general fund would be a negative 400,000. Again, if we look at the, the pros and cons with regards to that, similar to what we've seen throughout. But really probably the biggest one to highlight on this is that, you know, potentially you sell an asset, Metcalf, that you may determine that you need later. But again, that's part of your debate and everything that you're having upfront. So with that, Chair, I'll pause here again, in case there's any other comments that folks want to take. Or else I am happy to run through the last few slides and just get to the financial summary, if that's where everyone just wants to start bringing all their comments and discussion in.
Board members, any immediate questions? Director Schatz?
So, yes, thank you for all this is, this is really the analysis and numbers that we were looking for. So I appreciate the time that's been put into this. So the, these last two options, five and five A do not include sale of two acres of deck, right? Does it show zero for those?
That's correct. So that means that you could have option six, right? Which would include option five or five A with showing the sale proceeds if you chose to sell two acres at the deck.
Okay, which were just at 1.2 million. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point? I'm not seeing any. So Stacy, why don't you wrap this up?
Okay. All right. Great. So as we again go through the considerations and it's a lot of what you guys have already kind of thrown out in some of your comments between policy and financial and it's, you know, it's maybe it's clear, so clear to some of you, maybe, you know, it's not. I think it's a hard decision when you have to weigh the pros and cons of, of each of those. But let's go to the next slide for our findings. Again, option four, and I think we heard from a couple of you at least is not likely, you know, because you have to expend a lot of dollars to build a new facility and that may not make sense in the economic times where you as a district are, or what you're looking at for the future of your district. Again, five A may not be likely. And we only say that only because what if you want to keep Metcalf for a future use? And again, that's part about what you think your future enrollment may or may not be within your district. Again, as you've seen, it's most more cost effective to use your existing assets. The sale proceeds aren't going to solve your long-term budgetary issue challenges. There's potential loss of assets that you have invested in, but you still have to pay for and it's messaging around that. And the deck is ready for redevelopment and Metcalf is going to take a little bit of work. So with that, we do have the financial summary. And I don't know if we want to pause there or if you want to go into your recommendations at all, Lisa, before we talk about some of the pros and cons here.
Are you asking me, Stacy? Are you asking Lisa?
I'm, but Chair Lisa, again, they have some recommendations that they're, they're looking at and we can go in after that and talk about the direction consensus if you like, or we can talk about that now.
I think, I think we probably can just finish this up and then go to the discussion.
So then Stephanie was going to cover the next slide.
Thank you. So this kind of brings us full circle back to the slide that we presented earlier, which kind of aligns what our recommendations are as an educational team, as a team that's trying to plan ahead for programming. And how we see that, that information that Ellers has presented to us and how it braids it together with the needs that we see so far as a district. And so again, leasing cedar, creating another space for bars and then being kind of at a fork in a road around the decision of Diamond Head. And how that'll impact the use of the other buildings moving forward from there.
And now we're going to move back to Stacy then.
Thank you, Chair. That's the end of our, our presentation. So I would send it back to you, Chair, as we can start to go through a discussion to talk about if there's that makes sense, priorities for policy consideration versus financial, and we can start to walk through that.
Yes. Yes. And I think people have already, we've already, board members have already started touching on some of the questions that we need to answer for ourselves. And and going into this meeting, I was giving thought to those questions. And just wanted to share the ones that I came up with just to get us started. Not in any particular order, but in terms of the decisions that we're making right now, they're obviously both for our current families and for our future families. And we kind of need to be able to think in in both ways about what's going to work well for our families and for the district fiscally now and in the future. We've already, you know, touched on what kind of school district do we want to be with regard to middle schools, two middle school or three middle schools? Where do we believe that we as a board can help build up our district and its enrollment? Um, where do our programs and students belong? What works best for them? The proceeds of any sale, obviously, we're going to have to decide where we want those to go, what kind of request we might want to make, whether it's straight to debt service, general fund, or special legislative exception for another use. And then I can't remember who touched on it. I think Eric, it might have been you, but thinking about how COVID and the pandemic might be affecting our reality right now, it is temporary, but all the economic indicators, at least right now, are kind of cautious and conservative. So with that, I'll open it up. Are there any options that make sense to eliminate for further discussion? And maybe if we use the little hand thing on the side, so I can see, because I can't. Or is there general discussion that folks want to have before we get to?
Chair, if I may, there was discussion earlier from a couple that at least that that option for just wasn't something that's feasible. So is that one that the board is willing to to gather around and decide that that's not something you want to pursue any further?
Yes. I vote for removing four.
I agree, please.
I also would take four off the list.
Okay. Is it fair to say to the group that maybe one, you know, isn't something that you're looking at doing right now because you're looking to activate or maximize dollars and use of your facilities?
I was going to suggest that, yes, we have to do something. So status quo does not feel like a good option to me.
I agree too.
Yep.
So one and four.
I was also going to ask, and I Darcy already asked about it, but it was in my notes. Is that possible? I don't think option six or option five B or kind of a combination of two and five, I think, is what it would be where stay in play Diamond Head retrofit for best. So River Ridge, sell the 10 acres of Metcalf and sell the two acre outlot at Diamond Head. That's not an option on the list, but it's one that I'm wondering about.
Yep, Scott, you beat me to it. Create an option five B, which is option five.
You suggested it first.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll take the credit. So for option five, with the addition of sale of the two acres of the deck property.
I like I like I also like the idea of the five B. I think one of the other things I was thinking of, if it's actually option six, which is taking five A and the two acres of off the deck would be if Metcalf, if selling Metcalf for redevelopment is actually going to make housing happen, would that actually address some of our enrollment? To so like by adding the 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 single family and maybe, you know, low density townhomes there, would that be adding to our our potential student population? So would there actually be a future benefit with actually the full sale of the Metcalf property? So I, you know, I like the I like the five B option, but you know, is there a potential, you know, six?
Yep, I would the only I would prefer to move. The only reason why six, I'm hesitant about six is I'd prefer to move bars to Metcalf rather than MW Savage, so that there's more possibility of connections between the bar students and the VHS students and the activities at the high school, things like that. So putting them at MW Savage is a little bit more difficult to create those connections.
I was actually going to ask, sorry, this is one else. When I go first. I was curious if there were limitations in our ability to potentially have best and bars share a building. I don't know how much space they both. Neither one takes up a lot of space. So is there an opportunity for them to share a building? I'm just asking, I don't know.
Would that be a question for Stephanie?
Yep, I I'd be happy to tell you, we certainly have discussed that ourselves around programming and the kinds of resources that we could share if we were in this in the same building. We are, although it seems like similar programs, we and we do have some things in common, we do have some things that are very different. And so just wanting to make sure that we're addressing the individual needs of the programs and their and their potential to thrive. It's interesting, as we dive deep into distance learning, you know, and we're just only four weeks in, so I don't want to speak too close, but there's a lot of potential or silver linings to what we're doing here and how that could affect, you know, one or both of those programs moving forward. And so Director Shots, you know, we thought about that too, and that was one of our really high values. And I trust Kelly Ron, the principal there, and she really sees some different potentials as we're moving forward. We want them to be connected to the high school as well, and transportation has always been something that's been glitchy in terms of how to make that work. And at the same time, they are looking for a different environment. That's why they're not there, right, is is we're trying to provide them choice and do something different. And so how does distance learning affect that? I don't know that we really know the answer to that, but it certainly is something that we're talking about. And how does that take us back to our values of being fiscally responsible, enhancing enhancing the programming that we have either separately or together? So.
And I guess I had a I had a question in on specifically on that as I was going through the slides. I know that there has historically been limited connection and connectivity between our bar students and the high school. And Stephanie, I heard you allude to the fact that that in part is intentional because a smaller school environment is beneficial for for many students.
Right. And and what becomes important for us there, what we really want to give kids is access to that great content that happens at the high school, right? I mean, that's the part that, and I think you alluded to that, you know, Director Shots, is we really want them to have access to those great voices and opportunities. And so that's where we're starting to see and formulate a vision for maybe how that could be without having to compromise the choice that they maybe are making to be in a smaller environment.
So you're saying that the expectation of the students and the staff at bars is not necessarily that we want to increase the 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 co-mingling of students from the alternative high school at the the physical location of the high school.
I I think I think that a smaller environment plays a big role in in the success of the students at an alternative high school. You know, and for a variety of reasons, I think that's one of the big factors of of choosing not to be at the high school or finding success at a smaller a smaller school. And then recognizing that that limits some of the choices. And so, you know, we want to be able to meet the needs of those students and and give them full access like any other student. And at the same time, give them the the environment that they that they found success in.
Yep. And I wasn't even thinking about the classes themselves, but more like access to extracurricular activities to the college, you know, career fairs, things like that, which are which can be challenging, as you alluded to, Stephanie, and would be more challenging if they were at a further distance at MW Savage.
Yep, could be, could be.
What was? What was some of the thinking behind preferring moving to MW Savage over Metcalf?
Yeah. Assistant Superintendent jump in here.
Thank you for the question, because I was going to mention something too about the distance. So the invitation to come in here is is helpful. Kelly Ron and I had an opportunity to tour the 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 two sites, Sutrail as well as MW Savage. And then she's just really familiar with the Metcalf building, having served there as a principal for a number of years. One of the things she likes about their current location is the layout is very easy and conducive to the kind of small feel and culture that they have. And the thing that was preferential about MW Savage was when you walk into that building, immediately is a office to the left is a gymnasium, which are critical pieces of what they're looking for. And then there's a singular long hallway that can house the majority of their classrooms. And I think it's that aspect of it comparatively to Metcalf, which has a round first floor. So certainly makes it a little more difficult to have that feel supervision and other kinds of things. The gymnasium is significantly further away from those. So again, I think it's some of that distance and travel. And with the size of their staff, the ability to connect with students during passing time, the ability to again, provide the kind of supervision and opportunities that they like, that was what was really preferential about that MW Savage site. And, you know, we also again toured the the Sutrail site. Wasn't quite the same when it came down to size. They really wanted as much as possible all on a single level. And it just wasn't going to be conducive to doing that. As well as to quite honestly, the the natural lighting that exists over at MW Savage, when you're walking down the hallways, it significantly changes, I think, the mood, even when when we toured, it was actually a little dark in the basement. And again, I realize the classrooms are a little bit different, but it's just kind of that interior space that kind of ruled out Sutrail as well. To the point in the question, because Kelly and I did discuss the location and its proximity to the high school as a potential factor. Kelly did some research and one of the things she would point out, there's not a walkability in either situation. There is transportation going to be needed. And the current bar's location is, I believe she said, 3.3 miles from VHS. MW Savage is 4.2. So you're talking about a difference of less than a mile, both of which are going to not be things where students are going to be walking from one side to the other. So there is going to be a transportation factor regardless of which of those two locations, if you're referring it to Metcalf, I realized it's a little shorter. Still probably not a walkable distance for extracurriculars or other kinds of opportunities. So transportation, whether it's student transportation or us providing transportation, still in play. And so it was kind of a set aside as really not much of a factor. The last piece I'll say about the MW site, I believe we marked it off at about 0.3 miles from a public transit stop. So again, also accessible to public transit, which was also a big factor for selecting kind of or recommending a site, excuse me, for bars.
Cheryl, I have a additional couple of questions. Brian, as you were about to speak and then speaking, I ran the Google numbers on those. You're you're absolutely right about the distance. It's not it's within a mile or a little less. But one question I had is if we're talking about moving that population to downtown Savage, have we engaged the city of Savage and the community there about that? You know, they're used to having a school there, but it is it was an elementary school. We would be talking about moving a different type of student and population there would have you know, a different body of students in the neighborhood throughout, you know, after school in the day, whatever. Have as we have we talked at all about, maybe they would, maybe the city would just love to have the building not be vacated and be used. And that would be the stronger positive. But have we engaged the city at all in that conversation?
I'll speak first. I have not, and I'm to my knowledge, we have not. To your point, I think one of the things we identified about the site that would need to be some kind of a discussion or kind of a training for our our staff and our students is that that location has very clear carved out in a residential. And with the front door being along kind of the front portion of it and the parking lot along the side, we would have to have some expectations about the invitation that might be using the off street parking, which would be right along residential areas. So certainly there is a wanting to be a good community partner and the ability to come into a community like that with student drivers and a different population being served than before versus elementary kids. So I think that's an important factor. It's just is not a step that has has been taken to this point. Although we have looking at that site had identified, there might be some things from a neighborhood perspective that would need to be discussed.
Director Miller and directors, I have had conversations in the last day with Mayor Janet Williams and City Administrator Brad Larson. And if you remember, one of our previous workshops on this topic, we talked about the possible options for community engagement. And so our partner in the city gave us Jenny Faulkner gave us some ideals that we could actually meet with the neighborhood association and other community groups to really, if this was the decision, if the board makes a decision about Diamond Head or the other properties, we would engage the public in a discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Board members, any other comments? Since we're talking about bars, whether it belongs at MW Savage or Metcalf? We've heard from Leslie, Darcy, Eric.
Abigail?
Yes, DeeDee.
I apologize. I missed the March meetings where some of this was discussed. So I'm absorbing a lot of the discussion this evening. I'm bars is was there any discussion of having bars at Diamond Head through any of this? And and what was the result of those discussions?
Dr. Battle, do you want to take that?
Um, I believe Brian Gersich and Stephanie White may it was a consideration, but I'll let them weigh in on why we landed on the top two choices. I think some of the points they made earlier would carry over with Diamond Head, but I'll let them speak to that.
Stephanie and Brian?
Yeah, I can just speak to, I mean, I think part of it, and Stephanie can speak to this part, is just that the the best program may have been a better fit because of the good partnerships that that might exist. But I'll let Stephanie speak to that part. I think in some of my early conversations with Kelly Ron, as Dr. Battle just indicated, I think, for some of the same reasons why MW Savage was preferential to say Metcalf, when it came down to the ability to kind of have their own space. Again, having, when you think about the spaces that they may occupy at at the DEC, having their own restrooms, having their own separate locations, also DEC, that what they were really looking for too, kind of one of the critical factors was that that physical education space. It is a really big part of their curriculum to be able to have a large enough for adult sized students. Yeah, that that space to be able to to move. They've got a very nice weight room that they've they've equipped as well as the gymnasium that they have, neither of which found great fits without significant work to retrofit that space. So for some of the similar reasons of Metcalf, but also the logisticals of what they really want to use to serve their populations, DEC just didn't feel like a good fit.
Did a cafeteria factor in as well, Brian?
They weren't as concerned about cafeteria because of their population, a lot of the food services are brought in. So I feel like they believed that they could make do with a lot of different spaces for their meal services. So that wasn't a factor in that particular one.
Great, thank you. Stephanie?
Yep. So just to support that, just this amount of space that that bars is looking like they require versus the amount of space that best would require. And then we do see some natural fits. And we kind of mentioned this, I think, in our last presentation, you know, the potential reimagining the campus cup and not trying to recreate what it was, but maximize. but maximize that resource and to create a, a space for our students to learn and grow and potentially serve that as a business opportunity or, or an opportunity to learn that type of work in their schooling while they're at Diamond Head. The, the other efficiency that it creates as we bring a special education program close to another special education program is that supervision. And the other special education program I'm talking about is that early childhood special that already is located in Diamond Head. And then to bring BEST there as well, we believe we can find some efficiencies, you know, that way too, just by bringing them together. Kind of the same ideas if we just, if we decide or if it, or if the path leads us to putting BEST and BaaS in the same building, those same efficiencies, we can consider both good options. BEST, you know, many districts choose to put their transition program with district offices, and I can think of several in my head. And, and it's because it's a work environment and that's the, um, the population that we want to acclimate to a work environment. Not necessarily a school environment, definitely it's based on education and we're teaching them all those life skills and functional skills, but we want them to be acclimated and comfortable in a work environment. And by putting it with district offices, we just naturally provide that opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think as I was going through the slides and having listened to the conversation tonight, speaking for myself, I would be interested in exploring five and five A with the, with the adjustments that board members have already suggested with the addition of the outlaw, selling the two outlots at Diamond Head. I think we need to determine, we need more conversation around, well, the two or three middle school, school district, what we might, what we envision for Metcalf, what we, we might envision for that, that property. For me, I think in terms of, you know, looking at the numbers, obviously selling off the entire property makes the most sense. But again, I think we all need to have a conversation around what, what that might mean. And if keeping Metcalf is, is a better option, I, I don't know. But for me myself, I'd, if, if we were to adjust five and five A to include the, the sale of the two Diamond Head outlets, that's where I would land in terms of future conversations.
I agree.
Me too. Um, one thing that I was thinking, like if we were to actually sell off Metcalf in its entirety and would want to go through special legislation, at all, would we want to hold the, the proceeds for a potential build out of Eagle Ridge then? So then there's some capital money that we're already setting aside, knowing that there might be potential to have to expand a middle school. It was just a thought I had.
Yeah, and I think that, um, that makes sense. We, I, we had, you know, we had discussed that, I think, at our, at one of our previous meetings that, you know, if, you know, the option, the obvious option is to use the money to pay off debt. But at the same time, we also know that we're setting ourselves up to need more space i- if that's the option, Leslie, that we choose. And so why not leave a little nest egg to get the project started? Recognizing that probably there would be another, there would be a bond that a future board would have to ask the community for. So in terms of clarity, it's, it sounds like folks were landing, i- is there any, any further discussion about the, those two last options? Or any of the other options?
Chair.
This is Stacy. So if I, if I may, it seems where you've landed is option really five and five A with the addition to both of those. Selling a portion of your parking areas, it be to two acre or whatever size it's going to end up being as an outlaw as well. So essentially that means that you're all collusing around the fact that it makes sense to stay at the deck in place there to sell River Ridge and move the BEST program to what facility you want to deem as the most appropriate based upon the recommendations that you have. And then really what that does for you for options five and five A, as we can begin to look at those further, you don't have to make a decision about selling all or a portion of Metcalf today, which is great. All of these options still give you and buy you some time, but we can do some more fact finding to get some better dollar amounts for you.
And it would be helpful, I know that you've been, you've, it's, it sounds as though you've already had at least a couple of conversations with our friends in Eagan and probably more conversations will, will need to be had to, to explore what, what might work well for them as well. So I think that pretty much wraps this part up because, yes, Dr. Battle.
Chair and directors, is it also a, a next step is to really look at the future two or three middle school and bring back more data about Eagle Ridge? So we're clear about what would prompt that? How much the cost would be? I think Lisa referenced 7.1 million. So for us to bring that back also, so we're clear.
I'd like to throw out there as well. I don't know, I mean, the, the obvious, the obvious option that we have been talking about is Eagle Ridge because it was constructed to receive an addition. I don't know if there's any additional information that we might need about Nicollet because in terms of do we, do, are we assuming, and this is what you'll have to explore, are we assuming that the expansion would be able to be kind of shifted east? If there's, if there's enrollment growth? And in terms of attracting new families, I'm thinking also about, you know, improved facilities, you know, the state-of-the-art facility is much like we we added at the high school. What are thoughts on that in terms of what's possible at Eagle Ridge? Secondarily at, at, at Nicollet for future consideration? I, I don't know.
Thank you.
Board members, anything else to add to, to Dr. Battle's? Follow-up?
I just want to clarify the timeline for decisions. I think, I think that was the last, the next, the last slide, wasn't there, one around timelines? Because if nine one seven possibly wanting the rest of Cedar School, I thought to the fall of 21, so we don't need to, I, I don't think we're talking BaaS would be moving this coming school year, is that right? Or what, is that possible?
We'll work with our nine seventeen partners to talk about that, but they would not be looking for moving in till one full school year.
Right.
Two things that I'm keeping in mind is, um, what they would, what they would want be able to do to the building in order to get it ready for the students that they'll serve there. And so we'll have to, you know, collaborate with them on that. And then of course, the impact of the pandemic and what that
Right.
You know, in the next year, so.
Maybe. It may be impossible for the BaaS to move this fall, even if they want to, right?
Yeah. Yep. So, and then we'll just have to watch what the fiscal impact of that is of just staying put until we start to get leasing and, you know, what do we need, need to do for that other building? Those are all details we'll have to to determine.
Lisa?
Just to note that when we began leasing, the portion of Cedar that we did lease or are currently leasing, there is approximately a, an eight-month period of time for the process of designing and bidding and then getting that work accomplished that needs to happen before you can actually begin the new program. That, that was the experience previously, there's a little bit more square footage we're talking about if it's the rest of the building. But that's just, I'm just sharing what, what had happened.
So are you saying it would have to be, it could be staggered in terms of, it, it sounds like it would have to be staggered, moving the alternative high school students out to be able to retrofit for the next occupants?
Well, actually, much of that planning time though can happen with the students still there. It's, I mean, with the intention that you would have everything drawn up by the architects, the bids have been let, approved, and then the contractors are ready to roll in as soon as school's out in June. And they have it then ready within a few months for new students coming in in the fall.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Any board members?
I don't want to call out, but we, um, we haven't heard much from Jen, so I know that the rest of us have chimed in, but I was just curious what, what her thoughts were too.
You haven't heard much from me because you, I agree, like I, I feel like the, the five and five A are kind of the most logical choices with adding the, um, the two acre outlots to see what that would look like and just kind of get more details on those. But I, yeah, I just am quiet because I, I've been agreeing with all the conversations so far and just nodding along, yep, mhm, yep. Sounds good.
Thank you. Good question, Leslie. Thank you. All right. Dr. Battle, Stacy, do you have what you need from us?
So yes, I think the last slide is Director Hume said the next step, I think Stacy has some final comments.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners or Director, I keep calling you Commissioners because that's what I'm so used to in my, but my public life, so I apologize for that, Directors. Yes, I mean, I think it's a great direction that you've provided, I think it's been thoughtful discussion. It gives us some things to springboard in to get you some more definitive numbers, timing and options. So that's what we're going to come back with for you to help you understand more of that and then just identify the steps for implementation. When longer that will go with the timeline, that we'll work with staff on to say, as you look to transition these programs or move things or do something, where is that going to fall within the next, you know, 18 months to 24 months? Hopefully we don't go out past that and, uh, but you know, that's all based upon what happens with the current pandemic situation. But I can tell you from the development side is that, you know, developers are still moving forward with projects as proposed. Some have put maybe a couple of things on pause, but again, everyone, we're, we're hearing and discussing is that, you know, hopefully what they're seeing is that the late half of 2021 is where they're starting to see things start to go a little bit better. So with that, I'm happy to answer any more questions that you may have.
Open it up for one last round of questions.
I just want to say thank you, I think it's been really helpful information and good discussion. So thank you for all the work that went into preparing fifty something slides for us, it's been great, thanks.
I see heads nodding, yes, thank you all very much. I know that we've asked you for a lot of information and I appreciate the attention among us all, among board members and staff and, and Lers, your assistants in getting the information that, that we needed to feel comfortable having tonight's conversation and, and getting closer to reaching a final decision. I know this week there, there were some, some last minute requests for additional information and everybody's busy, so thank you very much. And with that, we will conclude the workshop and we'll pause for a minute or so and transition to the retreat to develop board priorities.
And Chair Alt, you're welcome to move forward anytime you're ready.
All right, thank you, Erin. All right, so tonight, tonight's workshop, retreat is really part two of, of a conversation that, that we've had. It started with our board self-evaluation that we did together with MSBA representatives. And at that retreat, we agreed that we needed to set goals for ourselves generally tied to the strategic plan. And, and again, I know that Dr. Battle is talking about connecting, really getting broad input on our strategic plan to determine where it might need to be tweaked, not making major changes. But for this year, we will tie our goals and Dr. Battle's goals to the strategic plan as it is, so. As part of the meeting materials, there was a, the summary provided by the Minnesota School Board Association. And coming out of that February retreat, we did come up with four options for board goals. And I wanted just to open it up to board members in terms of where we think we need to focus ourselves. The four, so we have, just to draw your attention, we have the first goal, possible goal is ensuring transparency. Second is onboarding process to develop and evaluate. Number three, connecting all board work to the district strategic plan. As an example, linking our board meeting agendas to the strategic plan. And four, supporting district PR as ambassadors. And I think probably what we'll do first is we'll identify, start by identifying two or three goals and then kind of talk about how we can make them smart goals.
I think we've, as far as the onboarding piece of this, and we started that with Leslie, Jen and Scott coming in, and so we already have that mostly and mostly in place. Certainly updates to be done, things like that. So I, I recommend we keep that as a goal since we've already done it, so. I'm kidding, we should not keep that as a goal, since we've already done it. So, uh, but I think.
Make it easy for us, already done, so let's have it as a goal.
Yeah, that's, that's why I like adding things to my checklist that I've already done and then crossing them off, so. But I, I think we've already done much of that, I mean, certainly that's, it's a goal to maintain that, it's a goal to update it as it needs, you know, to be done. But I, I, if I understand, and you know, Leslie, Scott and Jen, you can speak to this more accurately, but it seemed like the feedback that we got from you about that process was fairly helpful and useful.
Can you, yes, I agree. Can you remind me the goals, like what's the calendar that, when do they start and end, and we start looking at the next round of goals? Because what I'm wondering is depending on how this falls, what happens with the election this fall, we may need to revisit the onboarding or have, have it been more prominent goal depending on, you know, if we have three new board members next year, we may need to revisit what the goals look like, what that onboarding goal looks like.
That's what I was thinking, well, I was thinking maybe we might want to keep it as a goal just for the fact that we may have new board members coming in and then we can really nail that process down and know, you know, how many meetings they might want to attend beforehand, what kind of information gets delivered to them. So maybe keeping that as a goal for, might be helpful. Just so we can get a whole, you know, run through, assuming we get any new board members, I don't.
Maybe we keep it as a goal this year and then if, you know, next year's not an election year, so then we wouldn't, would not need to have it as a goal, hopefully, next year. Yeah, I agree.
We will have at least one new board member this, coming in this year.
And I think, I think there are two parts to it because I think we have, um, we have documentation that I know. Thank you, Darcy, for all the time that you put into that and the new board members for helping with that. But what else, you know, what, what else might we want to do?
And let's, yep, and let's distinguish between the document that we just created, which was the public document of, so you think you want to be a board member? public document of so you think you want to be a board member.
Right.
Document, which is a very um just to give a really like high level um understanding and description of what what's involved in just in the in the job of how many meetings you go to and, you know, things like that. And so um just to set expectations so that we know that people that are running for the position have a good understanding of what's of what's involved and what they're getting themselves into. And so and so they're all going into with eyes wide open and and that sort of that already already committed to to the job in that in that capacity. Um, separating that, which I think is just a, that's a document that sits out there and whenever it gets updated, it gets updated. But it just it's it's ready to go as opposed to the onboarding um process that we put you guys through. Which was um, you know, sitting down beforehand, the mentoring, you know, pieces that um Abigail did with you, all those sorts of things. Um, because, you know, it may be that. I I agree, but you will certainly keep it because you're correct that um not a little bit there be a new board member coming in at least, but um depending on what meeting situations are, you know, going forward, you know, it's it's we you don't have quite the same connection um to people, being able to sit with them in person, um than you would do those those items virtually. So I retract my idea to pull this from our goals.
And I think also, there's also that in between time when, you know, we have people that have filed for candidacy. And um, I think there's some welcoming that we as a board can do to the candidates, those, you know, those of us that aren't up for election. To make ourselves available, Dr. Battles could certainly make herself available, like that little intermediate part. That where candidates might have additional questions beyond the information that's that's available online.
Almost like a personal reach out to them for those that are existing to kind of say, you know, oh, you know, congratulations that you're running. You know, I just, we just want to make, you know, ourselves available to you to answer any questions or, you know, sit down and chat and, yeah, I like that.
If I may, um. I thi- I think that's good that we're having this conversation, that the conversation has moved to this point now. Um, I think it's important to understand. There there was some real reason why that wasn't done in the past, uh and maybe you could probably Abigail maybe speak a little bit more about this, but um we've been blessed in recent time to have candidates running that are fully qualified and uh fully invested in the in the role and and come, you know, while I I am sure the three of you would probably state that you it was somewhat fair about different than you anticipated. Nevertheless, you had a pretty good idea of what you're getting into. Um, but we've had folks that have run on single agendas, um you know, and other communities have and will have. And we probably will in the future have that happen too. And so there had grown this sort of sense of I mean, I I literally felt a bit like a pariah when I was running um in with some of the previous board members, you know, that before you were actually uh past election night, um they just did not want to even come near you um or talk to you or be seen meeting with you, you know, individually or anything like that. Um, and I'm not supporting that behavior. I'm just pointing that out, but there was a there was a reason why we were in that position previously. Um, so just just throwing that out on the table.
Yep, and I would actually add to that, my the my lawyer brain um sends up little tiny red flags about, you know, meeting with people before they are elected, um things like that, because you want to be a little bit cautious about um looking like you are endorsing someone or otherwise, you know, assisting their candidacy in some way, things like that. And so I I I'm not suggesting that anybody would do that, but there's, you know, as we know, um, we want to be really thoughtful about you know, what it what it looks like, you know, and.
I think it's, I like the idea, but I think the reality of it is it's just not practical.
Or it's or it's a couple of people meeting with, yeah, yeah, or it's a couple of people, you know, that if they really need to, you know, have further questions that maybe those go through, you know, Teresa or somebody else that are a little bit more of a neutral party, you know, so just something to consider, you know, with that.
And I remember actually, um, there is a, there is a standard process with staff, which probably Darcy addresses your concerns. Where um, I remember that um, what was it, the first time that I ran, there was a, you know, presentation of information and this huge binder of information, I think it was Lisa and a couple of other staff members that held this meeting, invited candidates to the meeting to receive information and kind of get the general lay of the land in terms of um education, funding, you know, all all of that. And probably it's best, I think you're you're all probably right, it's probably best for that welcoming time to be with staff because that's they're the ones that can give that top line information and answer questions without getting anyone's um lawyer brain tickled.
Having said, having said that, I have all, I mean, part of the reason I supported the process that um we went through for for the three of you was that um the staff is, you know, let's face it, they're they're not going to want to um. I I I feel like board, I'm trying to tread carefully here, board members are probably going to be more frank and honest with someone coming in than than staff members are going, just because, you know, they're going to have to work for that person should they get elected and and um. You know, and so that's why, actually, this is why Darcy and and I had driven a product and Darcy primarily during a process around documenting it. We could share the messaging we are attempting to share, but put it in a document. Um, that didn't look like it came from any one individual of us and get it out there. So, you know, certainly a review of that document would be fine too. And that we we spent a number of time, some amount of time, Darcy and you're talking about, trying to be wordsmithing to be as frank and honest in that document as possible without scaring you guys away too much, but you know, that that this, I mean, you you know, most people assume it's two meetings a month and that's it, right?
As long as they don't ask Abigail how much time is involved and what kind of a position it is, because she'll tell you it's, oh, it's easy, it's fine. It's manageable, yeah. Nothing ever happens. She low, she lied to me.
Well, no, is but is there a way to still be able to do, have kind of a a thing with with candidates? But not be exclusive with individual candidates? Is there a way to have like them come as a a group? Kind of kind of like when when um they have like a candidate meet or meet or greet or whatever or whatever for like the the chamber and stuff, isn't there something that wouldn't set a precedent precedence of preferential treatment, if you will? If you're offering it at one particular time to bring in all of the candidates at once to kind of have a a a Q and A or or to have some sort of a a communication.
Or it could even be just as simple as sending out an email saying, if you have questions about this topic, this is who you would maybe want to contact, or if you have this question, this is who you want to contact and just be like a general like um fax kind of sheet. Um, after they have decided to run and they, you know, who your contacts maybe would be if you did um have additional questioning instead of just kind of going into it blindly, without necessarily having to meet or add that to anybody's um plate, you know?
Yeah, and I don't and I don't mean to like discourage people from, you know, recruiting people, you know, that you think would be great for the board, get more people involved. You know, things like that. I just, you know, just it's just something to consider, you know, a as a as a formal process. You know, informal chats that you have with people that you think would be great to, you know, be in the board or somebody calls you and says, you know, tell me what it's like to be in the board, whatever, because you have this personal connection with them, all fine and good. I just, it's more like, you know, just, it's just something to be thoughtful of. Um, so it doesn't appear like you are that that the board is somehow um like endorsing one candidate over another, something like that, so.
And I think you're right, Darcy. I think having structure makes sense and it it maintains impartiality while still getting a familiarity. Leslie, I like your idea about, you know. And 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 we can certainly flesh this out, but you know, so touch points with the the standard touch points with staff. You know, that whatever that meeting is with Lisa, um. Possibly like a a panel of, you know, three board members who are not running that year. And candidates can show up and it can be a Q and A. And uh Jen, your point about having an FAQ sheet. Just snippets of who you need to talk to if you have questions on X, Y, or Z.
No, one other thing, um probably not in the scope of this, but just to throw out there in general for this idea. Would be potentially to partner with some of our other uh district communities around us to to share this responsibility. They have to have the same issue. Um, I could speak much more frankly to a candidate running in a different district. And I could to one running in our district. I personally have done this in my business world, uh come across people locally and nationally that have talked about, oh, I've always thought about running for school board or, and then we've got a conversation about some of the realities and what's involved with it, so. Um, and it's just an awful thought, and we could pitch the idea to some of the districts around us that we could, and then they could offer the same resources the other way around, swapping of these persons and then you're sort of taking that uh influence piece off the table.
It's a good idea.
Well, and you can also direct them to like Minnesota School Board Association, um. That's another, it it keeps it more neutral. It isn't like you're you're politicking. I I try to stay as neutral as possible during the the stage before the election, but after the election, I think we've done a great job of educating our our new board members, so.
So it sounds like there's a resounding yes behind keeping onboarding for one more year as one board. Um, any others?
I, oh, go ahead.
Would would ensuring transparency be its own goal or could that be kind of the underlying thread of the other three goals?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a much more inherent, it that's more of a value sort of as as opposed to a goal, you know, sort of thing. Um, because then I agree, it's it underlies everything that is that the work of the board um does, it's more of a value than a goal. Hard to quantify that.
Yep. And we know it when we see it.
Well, you don't see it, it's transparent.
Okay, um. So we have two remaining, connecting all board work to the district strategic plan. Uh, and then the district PR and being ambassadors.
I think those 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 last two then should be, so the onboarding PR and connected to the strategic plan are three excellent goals. In general, there they are, they're in a, those are three different areas of board work. They are um, they address specific needs with the district and um, and they do, they do more. They each in their own way connect the school board and this work at the school board to the district itself, you know, onboarding pieces we talk about as we bring on new board members and and get them oriented. Connecting the our work to the strategic plan as we show on our agendas and things like that. Um, what goals and what activities that we are doing that directly support and advance the work of the district. And the PRP is certainly connecting with the district, um both both internally and in externally, I guess, and and helping people really celebrate and um acknowledge the great things that are happening.
Abigail, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry. Um. In terms of connecting the boardwork to the district strategic plan. Um, I believe that's something that um at least initially can start in the officers' meetings. Eric and and Teresa and I can can work on that. I'm wondering if individually we want to go back and just come up with suggestions for making them smart goals and we'd need somebody to be a point person with Teresa and Erin to work on the district PR because I think um our communications department probably has some really great suggestions for um what all we can do. Um, I I'll put that out for for discussion.
Sorry, which year, which both things out for discussion?
Both.
Or one of the other, okay. Uh, I agree, this officers' meeting is a great um place to start developing those items um where applicable, showing on our, even on our agendas, you know, what what items that we're doing that and how they connect to our strategic plan. It can be just a a short phrase or something on the agenda that says this discussion, you know, how it how it relates to our strategic plan, where it falls with that. Um, this, you know, so much of our work is done, um, you know, in in meetings and things like this that the public doesn't see um very often, but even even with retreats and, you know, workshops, things like that, you know. Here's why we're, we're not just having this workshop to discuss facilities. Here's how this workshop relates to the work of the the strategic plan and what we're doing.
I'm sorry, Scott.
I'm just agreeing with her.
And then is there someone who wants to be a point person to coordinate with Teresa on how we want to implement uh district PR? Supporting district PR?
My helium hand is going up unless someone else wants to.
Okay, awesome.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna choose you, Scott, so.
Too, I could be a helper.
So Scott and Leslie will work with Teresa and we can figure out how to support our communications department. Anything else? Awesome. Really great discussion tonight, everybody. Thank you very much. And uh be well and we'll see you soon. Okay, bye bye.
Sunday. Thanks.
Bye.